Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to welcome you to the Board for Land Use Hearings and Adjustments and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Bonita Springs, Florida. We will have the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Jim Werster, will you stand for the...
All join Mr. Werster in stand, please, those that are able.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
And will you please remain standing for Mr. Robert and Serpey will lead us in invocation.
May we be guided with wisdom and understanding in our decision-making, keep our troops and our country out of harm's way. We ask this in your name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please be seated. First and foremost, I want to apologize to you folks from the Hyatt and others that attended last week's meeting, and a number of us were not in attendance and we had to reschedule, so my personal apology. My name is Roger Brunswick. I'm the chairman of the zoning board, and we're glad we're all here today, almost all of us, but we have a quorum, so we will proceed. Roll call, please.
Robert and Serpey?
Here.
Chairman Brunswick?
Here.
Pete Pistori?
Here.
Richard Donnelly?
Here.
Frank Lyles?
Here.
James Werster?
Here.
Stephen Kissinger?
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the city attorney, please, to call the first case.
Thank you. This is the Pelican Landing Residential Plan Development Commercial Plan Development Amendment to amend Lee County zoning resolution number 94-014 to incorporate certain changes, one, to rezone 1.1 more or less acres from AG2 to CPD and add to the Pelican Landing DRI and CPD land development area B slash hotel. The second part of the request is for deviations for the CPD land development for the area B slash hotel. At this time, first of all, this case has been continued from the July 21st date to today, and so we continue with the advertisement and postings. The location of this property is at 5274, 5272, and 5260 Coconut Road. At this time, I'll swear in witnesses. Let me go with Mr. Arnold and Ms. Gensen. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear firm testimony you provide is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Now, both of you have previously been tendered as an expert in land use and planning. Is that correct, Mr. Arnold?
Correct.
And Ms. Gensen? Thank you. Let me swear in some other witnesses. Let me go down the room. It's probably the best way to do it is just to go down, and do I have any other experts that we're going to...
Richard Iback for my office.
Okay.
He is here. He's working on the project. I have the same question.
Okay, and we're not going into the hospitality expertise. It's mostly land use and planning, but I'll ask, well, I won't ask questions, but if it's needed, we'll get that as tendered as an expert. I'm going to pass the mic and ask everyone to state their name. I need that for the court reporter to get it on the record correctly, after which I will do a group swearing-in. If you do not wish to testify at all, it's fine if you do not state your name for the record, but remember, I won't have U.S. Record in the case at that time. Mr. Steinmeier?
Rick Steinmeier.
Harvey Monsefon, Food and Beverage Director.
Let's, can we go a little slower for the court reporter?
Sure. Harvey Monsefon, Food and Beverage Director of Hyatt.
Okay, so Harvey, and then the last...
Monsefon.
Monsefon.
Yes.
M.O.N...
S.E.
S.E.
F.A.N.
F.A.N., and he's the Food and Beverage Director for the Hyatt.
Joe DiMarco, Director of Engineering.
Brian Kramer, General Manager.
Brad Marman, Hyatt Hotels Corporation.
Richard Iback, Project Manager with Grady Minor.
Now, Mr. Iback, you've been previously been tendered as an expert in civil engineering before this tribunal, correct? Okay. If we need to, we'll go through a voir dire. I'll do it after the swearing-in.
Barbara Craig, resident.
I'm Barbara Craig.
Barbara Craig, resident.
And that's resident of Pelican Landing Community.
And Bonita Springs, yes.
Ann Kramer, resident Pelican Landing and Bonita Springs.
Marvin Hancock, resident Pelican Landing.
Bernard Kramer, resident Pelican Landing and Bonita Springs.
John, are you two now testifying?
John Dolmire, Community Development Director.
If you all raise your right hands, do you swear firm testimony you're going to provide today's truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Wayne, do you want me to have Richard tendered as an expert at this point?
You can. I think it's really going to be here for specific questions there may be. I don't know that he's going to provide engineering testimony, but you're welcome.
We'll hold off on it. It's not necessary.
All right.
Please proceed with your case.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, all. I'm Wayne Arnold with Grady Minor, professional planner, and pleased to be here representing the Hyatt with their request for the rezoning. The subject property, you all have seen it in your documentation, but you're probably all familiar with the existing Hyatt Hotel that's part of the Pelican Landing community at the end of Coconut Road. There was a 1.1 acre parcel of land that was annexed into the city as part of your annexations last year, and the Hyatt purchased the property with the intent of expanding their resort amenities into that area. So procedurally, there needs to be a comprehensive plan amendment that, under the annexation agreements, the responsibility of the city, but the applicant was responsible for going through the zoning process to bring this into the Pelican Landing DRI, CPD, RPD zoning document. The development standards of the Pelican Landing community are what had been established for the hotel as part of Area B for that master plan. Here's another, just shows you a little bit larger the context of the little over an acre piece of property that's the subject of today's hearing. The intent for that one acre is to put in a large pool amenity for the Hyatt. This is an active water slide and lazy river type pool that's for the hotel guests only. It's not open to the general public, but will be for hotel guests. To the north is the extension of Coconut Road, and you can see that it's placed so that the existing spa pool area that exists, this area flows into that area to the north. Here's another exhibit. We provided staff. We're also in for the development order to actually construct the pool. This was a landscape plan that we provided because we did ask for a deviation on the landscape buffer on the northern property line, and I believe we've satisfied staff that through the development order process, the landscaping and fencing that'll be placed along the Coconut Road extension will be sufficient. I think that obviously the Hyatt needs security and wants to be buffered from the road itself. So that is a landscape plan, a very detailed one that's been established for the project. Procedurally, there is a pointer on here, right? Is there a pointer? Top one? This area was called out on the original zoning documents for Pelican Landing. It was called an out parcel, and it was not included. So part of our process is to amend that plan, to go ahead and add that area to the community. I'm so sorry, didn't mean to do that. Call that out as Area B, and we call it out as the hotel. So that's the planned development master plan, and that was the DRI master plan. And both of those just simply are labeling to now include the line work so that this becomes part of Pelican Landing. The development standards are being modified slightly to accommodate the accessory structure, and those have been shown as underlying in your document. As I mentioned, we have the deviation for the Coconut Road right-of-way buffer that staff's supporting based on our landscape plan. And I'll point out one other feature that's a little unique to what they're proposing to do here, and the food service for this pool amenity area is going to be provided in here, and it accommodates, if you can see these two areas. The other deviation we requested was to your food truck requirements and your land development code, and we did that out of an abundance of caution, but the Hyatt proposes to have their food service made up of food trucks that will pull in and be there fairly permanent, but it gives them an opportunity to change out the food service styles, maybe seasonally or as tastes change, rather than to have a full built-in kitchen for this facility. But that's why that deviation is in place. With that, I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any, or be happy to respond to any public comments there may be.
Do you have a slide that shows us some of the budding properties, notably Pelican Landing, you know, how that...
Probably one of these two areas. To the north is the old former Weeks Fish Camp property that you all have seen come through the zoning process, and that's located in this area, and that's their marina component. There is a marina at the end of the extension of Coconut Road, but the relationship here is really to Pelican Landing foundation lands that are located here. Their use is primarily some wetlands and uplands, but as far as we know, there are no development plans for that for any future residential or commercial development. And then, of course, if you go back the other side of the Hyatt, these are all parts of Pelican Landing Community as part of the Raptor Bay Golf Club.
I have one question. The gate on to Coconut, is that just for the food service of this? What's the purpose of that gate? What else coming in there?
This gate would be here, I'm assuming.
Right.
That will be for the food truck access, and it will also serve for maintenance to get to some of the other structures, and it will be for fire protection.
Okay, the food is not coming from internally from the Hyatt?
It's my understanding, and we can let the Hyatt representatives tell us, but it's my understanding that the food will be prepared in the food trucks as if you were on a food truck on the street, but these would be there on a more permanent basis for use of the hotel guests.
Okay, I'd like a little further explanation with it.
Okay.
If that is appropriate.
Sure. Yeah, please.
Good morning.
Again, state your name, please.
Brian Kramer, General Manager at the Hyatt. The food trucks would basically be that. They'd be self-enclosed trucks, that the food would be prepared on the truck, so it wouldn't be brought in from the actual hotel. And the intent is so that if we wanted to change up the menu, we could have a different truck come in and serve a different type of fare if we needed to at different times of the year, so it would be self-contained.
Okay, it won't be, it'll prepare all the food off-site somewhere, not on the side of the street, and then come in and drop it, is it?
No, it's actually prepared on the truck. The truck has kitchen equipment inside of it, and so they'll prepare on a griddle or a grill the food service inside the truck and then serve it right from the truck.
Like the county fair.
Right, like the food truck should see at the county fair.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are the trucks, are these outside vendors that you'll be using?
Well, we haven't made a final determination on that. I think my initial plan is to try to do one myself, that we would run and manage ourself and potentially lease one out to somebody locally to come in and do that, but we haven't made a final determination on that as of yet.
Thank you.
The plan, I think, shows two gates. What is the gate to the left?
Upper left?
Upper left, yeah.
This gate?
Right.
In that location? This is a maintenance and pump building for the water slides and for the water feature that has a separate opportunity for accessing that for maintenance purposes.
Right.
The board doesn't have that particular slide, do we?
Yes. No, maybe we show the other slides. Yes.
This one?
This one.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you. Any further questions from the board?
The, I think, read somewhere in here that this particular parcel is currently being used for overflow parking. So when that capacity goes away for overflow parking, where, is there a need to relocate overflow parking on the site?
And again, I can let the hotel representatives, but I don't believe this is used for the hotel parking itself. I think there are some overflow parking that's involved with maintenance and other activities and...
Yeah, traditionally, that's been overflow parking for our employees for the hotel if we have a very busy day in the hotel. I've been at the property for 10 months now. I fairly new coming in, and so I've reevaluated the way that they've structured the parking in the building currently, and we've made modifications. Essentially, what's happened is our valet parking was too big in the hotel, and our self-parking would be full, our valet parking would be empty, and we'd have employees parking over in what we called Hyatt Park, that area there. So we've restructured the way that we do valet parking in the hotel where we can make it smaller, or we can make it larger to accommodate based on what we need. When the building was originally opened, it was open with the right amount of parking spaces. We need to run at full capacity, and we kind of restricted ourselves by imposing the way that we did valet parking in the hotel. So we've modified that, which should make the adjustments necessary so we can be flexible enough so that we don't need the overflow anymore.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any further questions from the board? Seeing none, hearing none. Public comment? Or no, I'm sorry, staff presentation. I forgot that you were here, Jackie. Sorry. Where did I get a look?
We'd like to get testimony in the record.
Just for the record.
Good morning. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development presenting staff's presentation. As Ms. Vance read, this is an amendment to an existing CPD/RPD to bring in property to the Pelican Landing RPD/CPD for the Hyatt Resort amenity expansion. It's, the amendment itself, as you see in the ordinance, the additions are in strike through, or sorry, in underline, and it's just to add the resort amenity feature. There's no other changes regarding principal structure setbacks and whatnot to this request. As Mr. Arnold pointed out in his errol, this is the property in question. Historically, the Hyatt purchased this parcel, these three parcels years ago before it was a residential use, and that property or the residential structure was demolished or removed, and historically, it has been acting as an overflow parking area, but it's not overflow parking to meet their required parking spaces. They have sufficient required parking on their site that they demonstrated through their site plan approval process. The future land use, as Mr. Arnold explained, this is part of an annexation agreement. We will be updating their land use classification most likely during the evaluation appraisal report process, as will the remainder of the annexation parcels that the city annexed part of last year. And so right now, we are looking at this classification under the current Lee Plan designation, which we are allowed to do under state statute, so it is classified as outlying suburban, and the uses that they are requesting are consistent with that land use classification, as well as the proposed classification that the city might go ahead and assign to it, which would probably be the moderate-density plan development classification, which is synonymous with all of the Pelican Landing property within the city of Bonita Springs. The current zoning is AG2, but of course, as part of this request, they're asking to bring the property into the RPD/CPD. This will be specifically the CPD area, B. The current use, as we explained, is vacant commercial for the overflow. Regarding the surrounding land uses, zoning, and current land uses, again, this is the property here. To the west, you have the Pelican Landing RPD/CPD, and this is the marina parcel. As Mr. Arnold stated, a majority of this is under conservation easement. This area here was cleared a little, maybe a few years ago, as well as this area here for some parking for the marina itself. To the south is the existing hotel property, again, with the land use being Lee County, Lee Plan designations until the city can go ahead and address that through the EAR process, but the zoning is still part of the entire Pelican Landing CPD/RPD, and it's the existing resort and hotel. To the north, as Mr. Arnold also explained, is the Weeks Fish Camp Marina or Estero Bay Marina, as you will, which the zoning board did hear those cases last year to go ahead and reuse that marina. And to the east, you do have the Raptor Bay Golf Community, the CLO project in Pelican Landing, and again, the existing hotel. This is just another exhibit of the addition of the AG Zone property into the entire hotel parcel. The master concept plan, just to give you a little history on this document, this zoning was originally approved in 1994, and the zoning is conditioned that as each track comes in, it receives another zoning level of review called final plan approval. So once this action, if approved by the city council, is done, they will have to come in again. It's an administrative review process for final site plan approval. So this plan, by its own nature, is very general. It's what we like to call almost like a bubble plan. It just generally identifies this area is RPD, this area is CPD. So that's why you won't see the level of detail that you would at site plan approval or local development approval. So this is just to zoom in the area that's added right here. Conditions of approval, again, what staff did is for condition three, it's to add the accessory amenity uses, so we went ahead and add those conditions which are contained in your staff report, and then we have conditions relative to the two deviations that the applicant requested, and I'll go through each one individually. Deviations 1 through 21 are existing deviations. We are not amending or touching those deviations. The new deviation 22, as Mr. Arnold explained, is a deviation from a 15-foot right-of-way buffer that is required adjacent to a right-of-way, and because of the unique design for the resort amenity and to fit all the drainage and the landscaping, what they did is did a alternate buffer where they're going to meet or exceed the type-D buffer requirements planting material, but it's just going to be structured differently and fit into that area in a smaller space. And so staff was concerned about what that looked like, and we definitely know that the Hyatt wants to create a high level of standard in whatever they do, but staff also wanted to make sure that those patrons were protected as well. So we did ask for additional detail, and that is outlined in condition three. But this is a more detailed level view. Again, we usually don't get into this level of detail at zoning, but because this is a deviation request, we wanted to see more detail. But this is the engineering level plans right here, and this is the landscape plan for that area, and you can see all the different types of shrubs that they will be planting, again, to create an opaque screen. It's just as much as their best interest, as well as the city's, to make sure that it's designed to a certain aesthetic standard. Deviation 23 is regarding the mobile food trucks, and staff and the applicant were kind of going back and forth, is it really a mobile food truck or not? I kind of equate this to, picture yourself at Disney or a theme park, and they have the little, the trucks that have different food options or services or beverages, and staff went ahead and put in conditions that the food trucks have to be contained entirely within the site. They can't be visible from the right-of-way or adjacent properties, so there's plenty of protections in place for this type of use, but it really is going to operate as if you were in a theme park, and here's a truck for popcorn and sodas. So staff had no problem with this deviation request. Surrounding property compatibility, as I explained, it's an expansion of an existing resort amenity, and staff's major concerns were just the safety and the buffering for the hotel guests. Consistency with the Bonita Plan, as I explained earlier, it still has a Lee Plan land use designation, so we went ahead and evaluated both land use classifications of what it's classified under the Lee Plan and what it would be under the Bonita Plan. We found it consistent with those uses. In terms of the future land use element allowable uses, we felt that this was a compatible use to the hotel as it exists, and the proposed planned uses for the marina and the existing Pelican Landing Marina to the west. And in terms of concurrency and availability of public services, that is required at time of local development order approval, but they have met several times with city staff and other review agencies such as Bonita Springs Utilities, Estero Fire, and Bonita Fire to make sure that certain things were in place as they move forward through the process. And in terms of the finding, there's 10 findings that staff had to evaluate to make sure that we could recommend approval for this request, and staff found them all consistent with those 10 criteria. And I'm here if you have any questions. Mr. Dolmire is, and so is Sean Gibbons for any environmental landscaping questions.
Jackie, is a deviation anticipated for the height of the water slide structure?
There's, there would be no deviation request for the height. They established their own property development regulations, so you'll see in the accessory structure setbacks, those are the setbacks that they are requesting. So it's not necessarily a deviation. We're approving, you would be recommending approval of those setbacks today in this document.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, Jackie. Jim, would you turn up those lights over there in the far end, please? We have some public comment. Anybody wishing to the other way, turn it up brighter? All three of them. Thank you. Any, yeah, thank you. There you go. Public comment. Good morning.
Yes, good morning. Rick Steinmeier. I believe the Community Development CH2M Hill have done a very extensive job of evaluating this, and I approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please come forward and state your name.
My name is Barbara Hinksen Craig. I'm a resident of Pelican Landing and voter in Bonita Springs. I'm a professor emerita of Wesleyan University in Middletown, Connecticut, where my teaching, research, and writing was in the area of public law, public policy, public administration, and regulatory policy. Several things provided in the annexation agreement allow the owner, the Hyatt, to make certain changes in its property, including but not limited to the following. A, food and alcohol service and consumption at the private beach park, which was the subject of a hearing like this last summer, at which I also testified in objection and continue to fight. And C, inclusion of a water facility amenity to serve guests of the hotel. One other provision in this annexation agreement, an agreement which I had no idea existed until I found it in the documents accompanying this hearing, is that the agreement, quote, "shall be construed and enforced in accordance with the laws of the state of Florida, and I trust with the controlling laws of the city, county, and federal government as well." Applicant here is asking for a waiver from some of those laws, and it is to three of those waivers that I wish to raise objections. First, I wish to clarify that I have no opposition to the addition of a lazy river and a slide on the property per se. I simply wish that the environmental laws and regulations that exist implementing those laws be applied to assure that the development of this project has no adverse environmental impact on the surrounding area, which is mostly protected areas covered in mangrove wetlands draining into the protected estuary of Estero Bay. It is precisely to assure that damage is not done to environmentally sensitive areas that the law requires these three things. A soil, vegetation, and topography assessment, an assessment of potential effects on the surface water management plan, and a formal environmental impact analysis, all of which are required to be done by competent experts in the field. It is not sufficient to simply state without evidence, as this application does, that this proposal, quote, "will not adversely affect environmentally critical areas or natural resources." This is the portion of this application to which I object, and that is to the applicant's request that these legal requirements waived. I suggest that the most appropriate action for the applicant Hyatt Hotel, in light of the Hyatt Hotel Corporation's widely trumpeted with much publicity and fanfare commitment to, and I quote off of their own websites, "environmental stewardship," and quote, "to taking focused aggressive steps to reduce our impact by implementing more sustainable building practices across our operations," is to withdraw its request for these waivers from doing the appropriate and critical environmental analyses before development, and to put its money where its mouth and commitment are, and that is to support the message it spreads worldwide on the internet, and I imagine in many other venues as well. Is it easy to ask your 300 to 500 a night hotel guests to help you to protect the water supply and reduce energy consumption by reusing their towels and bed sheets and lowering the air conditioning? Great ideas and lovely because it saves you tons of money. I am asking you here at the Hyatt to be the environmental steward... I am asking you here at the Hyatt to be the environmental steward your corporation professes itself to be. Do the legally required environmental analyses, withdraw your request for these waivers. And if the Hyatt fails to withdraw its request for the waivers from these legal requirements, then I ask the Bonita Springs zoning board to do its job and deny them. And if neither of you will do what I think is right, then I will be back before the city council, and in the meantime, do all I can assure that the appropriate and right environmental analyses are done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And to make this easier for you.
I think to talk before your record.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to come forward? Please state your name.
My name is Thomas Marvin Hancock. I'm a resident in Pelican Landing. I'm here to ask the zoning board to incorporate language in their approval. If they do approve, that the applicant will comply with all prior conditions of the zoning board, as well as all laws, rules, and regulations. I ask you to do that because last year you approved beverage service on our beach. And as part of your approval, you, the, it said there would be no amplified music. Our amplified music is prohibited from March 1 to October 30 due to potential disturbances to sea turtles and shorebird nesting and roosting. Unfortunately, there was a glitch, and there appears, it appears there was an event after this date, and it also, there was another event scheduled which was canceled a few hours before it happened. So, my request is that in view of the fact that there was a glitch with these dates and something did occur that shouldn't have occurred, I'm asking you to put in stronger language in your conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else wish to speak to this? Any comments from you, Mr. Miner?
If I might, I would just-
Mr. Arnold, excuse me.
I'm sorry. I would just add for the record that we are going through an environmental resource permit review with the Water Management District that will evaluate surface water management and then environmental issues. The site's been previously impacted, and I think staff rightly agreed with our request for a waiver from providing this information that will go through a separate review process.
Okay.
If I may also?
Please.
I'm sure that Professor Kramer is a very good professor, but we also have to comply with Florida statute, section 166.033, which sets forth that you don't delay or prolong the zoning while waiting for the environmental. If somebody needs to get state or federal, they need to, they go through that process independently. We're not allowed, we are prohibited from delaying a project for that reason.
Might I ask why there are waivers?
LDC Chapter 4 does have application requirements of what an applicant is required to submit at time of rezoning application. The city does allow for waivers requests, and the applicant did submit a waiver request with their justification. And Mr. Kirby, unfortunately, he was not here. He had a vacation. So, he was here last week, so he would have been able to testify. But he reviewed the waiver request and found that based on the current condition of the site, and he does site visits, that he felt that he did not need that material and that the permits from the state and the Water Management District would go ahead and provide the information that he would need. But staff agreed that the applicant did not need those items at this time because of the current conditions.
And we can have Sean get up and testify if the board would like that.
Do we want to hear that testimony?
Is he here?
Sean is here. He's supposed to-
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is this your first time?
Yeah.
Oh, this'll be fun.
I'm excited.
And I did even have a curriculum to tie for you. So, let me state your full name for the record.
Sean Michael Gibbons.
And where do you work?
Community Development in City of Bonita Springs.
And do you have any other jobs also?
I'm also professor of public administration at Boulder Gallquash University.
Okay. In your capacity at City of Bonita Springs, what do you do?
I do environmental reviews with Mr. Kirby, as well as landscape compliance.
And how long have you been doing that?
About three months now. Before that, I was doing permitting technician and intake for any kind of development orders, permits, the like.
And in your job, do you typically and normally go about doing environmental inspections?
I have just recently started doing so, but yes.
Okay. And when you go out in the field, are you able to recognize different conditions of land?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, let's see. You are a professor of public administration. Did you have any environmental curriculum while attending?
Yeah, string my undergraduate degree. I took environmental biology, Southwest Florida, as well as a series of biology courses, Biology 1, Biology 2, which does have environmental impacts.
You're going to have to talk slow.
I'm sorry. I took the environmental biology, it was Southwest Florida, for my undergraduate degree, as well as Biology 1 and 2, which require lab and field work in the field.
So, you're very familiar with this area of Bonita Springs?
Yes, ma'am, actually. I've been here my entire life.
Okay. At this time, I believe he can be tendered as an expert and as an environmental specialist, environmental planning, if the board agrees.
I agree.
And no objections, I presume?
No objection.
Mr. Gibson, you've heard the testimony today, that there's been some inspections out on the property. Do you think that it is something where the waivers can be provided?
Given the quality of the area, it's largely been used, I'm sorry. Given the quality of the area, it's largely been used as a parking lot. The majority of it has been ditched, dyked, and dredged, so there's not much area there to really environmentally impact. I can appreciate the concerns regarding the surrounding area where the Astero Bay might impact that. But again, given the specific site we're looking at, there's not much there. There's a small buffer hedge on the west side, as well as, I guess, it'd be the north side in this case. But outside of that, the area's largely been disturbed. The environmental quality of that area has been degraded substantially. So, I don't see any substantial concerns regarding the specific lot in and of itself. No.
Have you reviewed the zoning request as well as the zoning conditions?
Or the actual requirements?
Yes.
Only partially. Again, Mike was the lead on this one, so I have not seen them in their entirety.
In the review of it, would it enhance the area after being built as opposed to its current state?
I think it would definitely. I mean, it would provide a much more substantial use of that portion of the property. Otherwise, it's going to be underused. It will collect water and serve as detention area. But again, the water it is collecting is probably not getting the kind of treatment it would require, and that's a concern with the development of the area and of the lot. I think we actually get a much better long-term use out of that.
Are you familiar with Florida statute, section 166.033?
In terms of not being able to hold up permits?
As far as issuance of permits and as far as delays for other agencies with water management?
Correct. From one of the best of my understanding, we're not able to hold up permits at our level of government for other levels of government's permits. So, again, things like southwater water management, we cannot hold up the zoning review for those permits.
Okay. But you could put a condition that would say you can't actually go do the construction until you obtain those permits.
Correct.
Any further questions?
Did you have a chance to look for things like eagles' nests?
Yes, we were there with Mr. Kirby. We did. Again, there's no eagle nest in that area specifically at this point in time. In terms of gopher turkeys, the lot itself does not contain any. We did not do an assessment of the surrounding peripheral areas, so the other actual land tracts. But that lot in and of itself has nothing on it of any really environmental significance at this point in time. It's, again, it's been largely disturbed. It's been an glorified parking lot essentially for a significant period of time.
It's been filled.
It's been diked. Yeah, I mean, again, at this point in time, right now, it's probably full of water, given the rainstorms we've had. So, I mean, it's not functioning as it needs to function. So, again, developing that site would have no substantial additional environmental impact that's probably already having on it.
If I may, for the record, Jack Wang Gensen, if you look in your staff report on page 11 of 12, Mr. Kirby did go ahead and summarize the site conditions that he had witnessed when he did a site visit. So, you can see how he explained it's been cleared mode. He didn't find any listed species, heritage trees, or indigenous vegetation. So, he did do a physical site visit and summarized his findings on page 11.
Roger, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The parking that's, overflow parking that's currently being used there, has that-
Yes, sir.
-degraded the property, been really allowed? If you could look at it from the idea that it had not been parked on, would the site be environmentally impacted?
Had it not been a parking lot otherwise?
Yes.
No, not to any significance. Again, previously, there was a residential building there. That building might have been demolished. The lot itself has been leveled, grassed over. There are some, again, coconut trees, other nonlisted species, non-natives along the peripherals. But outside of that, that lot in and of itself was essentially, you know, a grass field. There wasn't much going on there. It didn't have any of the indicators of the adjacent mangrove population. There wasn't even a lot of wetland area there to speak of as well. So, mostly, just again, it's a glorified meadow detention area that hasn't been doing much other than just collecting water and sitting there.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anything else to add by the Hyatt or staff? Umri?
I have no comment. Waiting for a motion.
Waiting for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I just, could you answer this gentleman's concern about the noise and the music? How does, how will that impact the, this area?
Let me have Hyatt representatives talk to you. I think what they're referring to is a special exception, not the zoning case per se, but there were conditions about the amplified music, and I don't believe that it's the Hyatt who had that event. But I'll let them address that.
Sorry, yes, it was a Hyatt event. It was a Hyatt event. It was out at the beach park. It wasn't, I'm sorry, Brian Kramer again. It was at the beach park. It wasn't at this site that we're talking about here today. I'm unfamiliar with the one event that was talked about that happened that violated any ordinance. There was a second event that was supposed to happen out at the beach park. It was my understanding at the time when the event was booked that the nesting season was May 1 through, as typical nesting seasons are, at the end of October. I wasn't aware that in the ordinance, it was March 1. Somewhere along the lines, I think that was changed, and it was changed to March 1. Once we became aware that it's March 1 and that we would be violating the ordinance, we canceled the party at great expense, frankly, to the hotel and brought it back to the hotel because we didn't want to be in violation.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? We want to call for a vote, a motion? To approve or disapprove?
I'll make a motion that we approve it with the condition, you know, that as far as the noise is, you know, that gets addressed, that somebody monitors that. But like to somehow or another put that in as far as-
Have a noise that they just need to be subject to?
Yeah, yeah, so.
The noise isn't part of this.
This has nothing to do with the beach park. This has-
I understand that, but I'm-
But the water amenity and, do we, do we have hours of the amenity in there? We don't. And this is a dawn to dusk, right? Mr. Kramer?
Yes, the pool, the pool itself will be dawn to dusk. The pool decks themselves are potentially open later in the evening for people to be able to walk around, but the actual pool itself-
But there won't be any music or anything like that?
We may have, yes, we may have a group event that we do out on the deck as we do any of the other pool decks that we have at the hotel. So, on our main pool deck, if we have a group and we do an evening cocktail reception for them out there, they may have music-
They would still be subject to noise control ordinance.
Same normal ordinances.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The concern, discussion, the concern was that the noise that was referred to was coming from the beach park, an event that was held at the beach park. And as I understand it, there was a communication mix-up or non-understanding the turtle nesting season dates. So, the first event was held outside of those.
It wasn't the turtle. It was roosting birds. The migratory birds has a different date, and so there was additional, what Mike Kirby did was, and the zoning board agreed to it, was they added additional months that your normal cutoff. And so, the event was held, and our normal event process, no one realized there was special migratory concerns on this particular island. And so, not the statutory dates. It was above and beyond.
What would be the normal, and this is just a general question for all of us, I suppose, but what would be the normal method that the public or the Hyatt in this case would know when those dates change? How, would they be notified? Would we, would it, is it published? I mean, how are, how are people expected to know when these things change?
Right. When we did the Pelican, well, first of all, it's not a, it's not a city ordinance. Well, I'm sorry. Let me fix that statement. It's not a general legislative city ordinance for the migratory birds. Okay? In this particular situation, the additional timeframe only applied to the Pelican Landing Community Association's portion of Big Hickory as the special, I'm serious, as the special exception for the consumption on premises. There was a noise condition modified because of roosting birds that it was not, our normal standards are manatees, eagles, and manatees, forgetting a species here, oh, sea turtles. And it was not any of those three dates, the big three. So, when it was time for a special event permit, nobody picked up on that the zoning resolution had a specific date.
So, just be aware, there's no way to know when these dates change. Everybody's protected but the humans.
Well, I think roosting birds are important to protect. Again, this was a condition, I don't, I'm trying to remember if it went to the zoning board and the condition was added, or if it went, city council modified the condition.
I don't recall the zoning board.
I'm trying to remember.
No, I don't.
But it was added in. It was an extra two months. It seemed fine. And then, of course, it went into season.
What I'm, what I'm trying to get at, obviously, is so that this doesn't reoccur how they would be notified or how we would expect them to be notified, so we don't-
We try to make sure, again, our specially, our communications department works very hard to try to make sure everybody's aware and cognizant of the different rules. Because again, sea turtles, you're going to look at issues in the water. You're not necessarily going to look at it inland. So, depending on where the property is, what are the situations, there'll be different rules that you apply.
Okay. Well, thank you. So, we do have a motion. And do we have a, with, without the additional language you asked for?
Right.
And do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. This is a motion for approval. Very good. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Brunswick?
Yes.
Robert Inserpey?
Yes.
Pete Bastori?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Jim Worster?
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your presentations, both staff, Grady Miner, the Hyatt folks. And we wish you well with your new project and enhancement to your property. One other thing on the agenda this afternoon, or this morning, is we have the minutes from our last meeting. If you'll please just remain seated for one second. We have minutes to approve from our last meeting of June 16, 2015. Can I have a motion to approve?
Sean move.
Second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Minutes are approved. Having no further business, meeting's adjourned. Having no further business, meeting's adjourned.